...City of Bisbee, County of Pocheson, State of Arizona. They held on Tuesday, November 5th, 2019 at 7:00 PM at the City Hall Building, 915 South October Road, Bisbee, Arizona. Ms. Cornata, would you please call the vote?
Councilmember Louis Pollak?
Here.
Councilmember Joni Jacomino?
Here.
Councilmember Bill Higgins?
Here.
Mayor David M. Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johns?
Here.
Councilmember Joan Hanson is excused. Mayor Protem Anakline?
Here.
City staff Teresa Coleman, City Manager, Ashley Coronado, City Clerk, Jesus Haro, Public Works Director, Alberti Chavet, Police Chief, George Castillo, Fire Chief, James Ledbetter, City Attorney.
Thank you, ma'am. For our moment of silence tonight, I would like you all, if you would, join with me in talks and remembrances of the families, both United States citizens and Mexican citizens, of the tragedies that are occurring just south of our border in Sonora over the last several days. If you'd please join with me. Thank you. Would you please stand and join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and a good God, equal and visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome, everybody. As they say, welcome to the audience and those out in TV land. We will later have an introduction of new city employees done later tonight at a later, at a later date. They're working, most of them. What's up with that? And I do have a proclamation. This is our annual Festival of Lights proclamation. And so I'm gonna read this. Whereas the annual Festival of Lights commences this day to launch the Bisbee holiday season end, whereas members of our community and the surrounding area donate their time and talents to participate, bring the community together, and to launch the holiday lights within the City of Bisbee. And now therefore, I, David M. Smith, Mayor of the City of Bisbee hereby proclaim, November 29th, 2019, as Festival of Lights Day in the City of Bisbee and cordially invite all citizens, visitors, and the surrounding area to attend the Festival of Lights from 4:30 PM to 8:00 PM on Friday, November 29th, 2019. I do hereby set my hand and cast a great seal on the City of Bisbee to be affixed to this document dated this 5th day of November, 2019. David M. Smith, Mayor. Thank you. This will be at City Park. And there's gonna be lots of fun things for, particularly for kids, but lots of fun things for us because we get to watch the kids. And so there'll be games and prizes and presents and Santa Claus. And I believe Santa Claus will be arriving on one of our fire apparatus, accompanied by the Fire Department and with a police escort. So please come if you can. It should be fun. I will quickly go through what I have been involved in over the last couple of weeks, just to keep everybody in tune with what's going on. On the 16th of October, I met with our City Manager Teresa and a couple of department heads. We just discussed general catching up within the city, things that were going on, things to expect, some things that were in the pipeline for new city ordinances, etc. So those will be coming fairly soon. On the 18th, I attended a Firewise Planning Meeting, which was held here at City Hall. And I was with, we had the Fire Department and the Firewise Group, which I don't see anybody here tonight, but they're probably tired from the meeting last Thursday. On the 21st, I attended a Board of Adjustment Meeting. For those that don't know, a Board of Adjustment is the... It's a group. I was gonna say something smart. I didn't know. Board of Adjustment is the body that you appeal to in case of a zoning, planning, a zoning situation or in case of a side review board situation that you don't like the answer that they gave you, then you appeal to the Board of Adjustment. And so we actually had an appeal. And the appeal actually was held up medium that the appellate won their case. On the 23rd, I attended a meeting with the Camp Naco Nonprofit Group in reference to a lunch that we're going to be hosting with Naco Sonora at Camp Naco. That will be on the afternoon of the 16th. And on 24th, I was Speaker Rotary. I understand they are still operational even after that. On the 24th, I also attended Cochran Creek Community Hospital Foundation Board Meeting. On the 25th, we had a meeting in Mexico and Naco Sonora with El Masio and Naco, Cananea. And we are continuing to plan our get-together at the border on the 16th of November. Okay, on the 16th of November in Naco, Arizona, we'll be blocking off Towner Street, which is the one that runs in front of Gay 90s. And that will be blocked off. We'll be having one of our big screen that we use for outdoor movies. And Andrea Ramos, the My Towner part on the other side, is blocking off their street. And they'll be having folklorical dancers, which will be coming to our side also. And we will be having musicians. And the point is, is each side will be projecting what's going on on their side to the other side's screens. And so it should be a lot of fun. We're gonna have, there's food and drink and stuff like that. So we hope to, it'll be advertised. We have a press conference, who's, Friday, this Friday, on that. And so it should be a lot of fun, so I hope everybody shows up. And on the 30th, I attended a meeting of an ad hoc committee put together by our Arizona House of Representatives and our Arizona State Senate. At the Senate Chambers in Phoenix, at the State Capitol. It was an evening meeting. And the purpose was short-term rentals and the impact of short-term rentals on cities throughout Arizona. And some may know Arizona is in a unique position of our legislature taking all of our power away to regulate short-term rentals. So we have no regulation at this point whatsoever. Recently, as of two months ago, some minor regulations were put in, which I have brought back to the City Manager and have asked the City Manager to have our City Attorney draft an ordinance, which will be coming before the Council, to establish our ordinance will mirror the state ordinance. And so the state can't say that we can't do that because we can. And there's a few things that it requires short-term rentals to actually let us know who they are so that we can have a point of contact should they have an extremely loud party or whatever, we know who to get hold of. And along those same lines, party houses were the big topic. And as you saw, Airbnb has just changed their rules as of a couple of days ago, where they will allegedly no longer allow party houses based on a five-people-killing in California at a party house at Airbnb. And at that same night, I was supposed to attend a meeting for the Firewise people. And I want to thank Ms. Johns for taking my place at that meeting. And I appreciate your assistance on that. Thank you. On the 1st, I had a Science Center meeting. On the 1st, I also had another meeting in Mexico regarding the 16th and what we're gonna be doing. And then on the 4th last night, we had our second Charter Review Committee meeting. And that's going actually pretty well. We've got a good Charter Review Group. And they're keeping the City Attorney busy by asking questions and getting clarifications. And I certainly appreciate your work, Mr. Ledbetter, and that. So thank you. And so basically, that's what I've been up to on behalf of what we're doing here at this city. So a call to the public. We have one person signed up. And that's Elena Ryan. Elena, please come on. Welcome. How are you?
I'm good, thank you.
Good, good.
So my name's Elena Ryan. I'm born and raised here in Bisbee and have lived here the majority of my life. So the reason I've come in front of the City Council is because the Christmas tree is missing in, on the traffic circle. That Christmas tree has been there for 60 years. Anybody who doesn't live here could care less, that they weren't born and raised here, could care less about the Christmas tree and the traffic circle. But that's our history. And it's been here my whole entire life. And Joni, I think it's been here your whole entire life. And I've gone to see Robert Kintinar over at Freeport-Bagdad, and he said, well, he thought the property in the middle of the circle either belonged to the city or it belonged to ADOT. And he said, basically, it was falling down. Well, yeah, after 65 years, it probably was falling down. And he said they were gonna replace it, and then it didn't work out. And so I am respectfully asking, I've met with Jesus, thank you so much for meeting with me today, and the Operations Manager, Matt, right? Matt today. And they were very sweet and kind to me, and they listened to my concerns. I know it seems trivial. I know there's a lot of stuff you have on your plate, but the basic bottom line is, I want the Christmas tree that was, been there for 60 years, put back in the middle of the circle, where it belongs. And Jesus had some great points today in our conversation. He's gonna do something. They're making a plan. So, but they were very kind about it. And instead of like, instead of like going through all this rigmarole and all this paperwork and all this stuff, why don't we just get on the phone and call ADOT and get Freeport on the phone and you guys, and just have a conversation, like, let's make a plan, work together. Somebody at Freeport can build the tree, and you guys can shift in with Freeport and throw in the materials. I mean, it's not rocket science. It would be very simple to do and get it back up and running. I want it, and I'm not the only one. There are so many people in this city that were born and raised here. They want the Christmas tree back up and from, in, on the traffic circle, which y'all called around about now. So, okay, well, anyway, that's it. So, thank you.
Thank you. General business accounts payable?
I move that we pay accounts payable in the amount of $560,664.50.
We have a motion. We have a second. Do we have questions?
First up, on page two, I wanted to make a positive comment about what little money that we had to pay our new City Manager for moving, considering the last money that we shelled out for the last City Manager. So I just wanted to make a positive note of that. And I appreciate the fact that she was very frugal in her expenses. If we turn to page six, I'm just curious, a washer and dryer connection. Why do we have, where do we have a washer and dryer?
You have a washer and dryer at the animal shelter, for sure.
Okay. I was just, I was just curious. On page eight, the continuing saga of water in our parks. Garfield Park, $103. Grassy Park, $430. Again, what are we watering in Grassy Park that's $430? And I'll finish when you can answer, if you don't mind. $402 on West Vista and $109 on Cole Avenue and Arizona Street.
So Grassy Park, I can definitely answer because I was anticipating some of this. We had a water leak that was caused by somebody cutting our water line. So it was leaking water. They also changed the timer. And so we lost a lot of water there. So that was Grassy Park. The West Vista, what happens with West Vista is that's where our, we fill our water trucks at. And so I'm not quite sure if that was still, when we were finishing up our paving, but that's, we do fill up there. So if you see that, that's where that's coming from. You mentioned Garfield Park. I couldn't tell you that. I didn't notice anything, anyone said anything about any leaks there. And I don't believe we overshot that one.
Because it's $103. I mean, compared to, you know, some of the other ones. And then the other one was Arizona Street and Cole Avenue irrigation. That's what it just said. It's $109.
Arizona?
Says Arizona Street and Cole Avenue irrigation.
Oh, we replaced some shrub or some flowers. I think they're ventanas or something. We had to replace those. And so they may have been doing some irrigation for those.
$109, okay. The swimming pool, that's a question for you. The water bill is $395. Are you guys gonna continue to keep the swimming pool completely filled? Or are you guys gonna drain it back?
No, we're draining it back. They need to fill it for a small amount of time, so that's why.
Okay, so when you shut it back, are you guys gonna be cutting down the electric also? Because the electric was...
Yes, they shouldn't have anybody there, so.
Okay, cool. I think that's it.
Ms. Cornata?
I just had Grassy Park and the West Vista. Those were the only questions I had.
So they're all answered?
Yep.
Anybody else? All right, we have a motion. We have a second to pay accounts payable. Those in favor, paying accounts payable, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Next is the Consent Agenda. Two items. Approval of the resignation, I'm sorry, Item A. Approval of the resignation of Mark Capell from the Planning and Zoning Commission at the end of this calendar year. B. Approval of the appointment of Jennifer Graham to the Civil Service Commission. Does any member of the Council wish to have either of these pulled for discussion? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
We approve the consent agenda, Items A and B.
We have a motion. We have a second. Ms. Cornata?
Councilmember Pollak?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacomino?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to old business, I'm going to approve the Item 10 up. So we'll be going to Item number 10. Discussion of Possible Approval Authorizing the Bisbee Police Department to Auction City Surplus Vehicles and Surplus Miscellaneous Items at Police Auction on Saturday, November 23rd, 2019. Chief Chavet, welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Members of the public. It's that time of year again to give us some surplus property and hopefully put a little bit back into the city coffers. As you can see, we put the word out to our department heads for a long time in advance on this. And they produced a lot of stuff for us to surplus, for us to get rid of. We cleaned up down at the city garage. We had a lot of stuff that's been sitting around and catching dust for a long time. And so Bill Bagby's been hard at it to get this list put together. And we would like permission to sell the surplus property.
Any questions of the chief? Chief, where can the citizens take a look at it ahead of time and see what's up?
That's a very good question. Thank you. The Saturday, the auction itself will be Saturday, November 23rd. We will open up the lot. We'll have staff present on the 22nd, the Friday before the auction. We'll open the gates at noon and keep them open till about 5:00 o'clock so people can come in, look at the vehicles and the miscellaneous property, which you can see we have a lot of, and see if they want to come back and bid on it. It'll be a busy day for us that day, but I'm hopeful to get through it and get some of that stuff out of the lot.
Thank you. Ms. Cornata, will this be on our website?
Yes.
The list?
The list. We post the list.
Right. I mean, if somebody wanted to now, they could go or bag it.
But we'll post a link to the list.
So the list as well on our end. Bill Bagby will take this and put it in a nice format. And it'll be distributed to numerous convenience stores, public places around town, both Bisbee and Douglas, so that we can get the word out to as many as possible. And then we'll have a course on the police station as well, if somebody wants to swing by there.
Great. Thanks to you. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Who have a motion?
I move to approve the sale of city surplus vehicles, surplus miscellaneous items, at a public auction on Saturday, February 9th, 2019.
Second?
We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor?
Excuse me?
Yes. November 23rd?
Yeah.
February 9th. So it's November 23rd?
November 23rd, 2019. Yes.
So the CAF is what?
It's right in the discussion, but it's...
It was noticed correctly.
Okay. All right, so the motion is clear. It's November 23rd. And we still have a second? All those in favor, the Police Auction on November 23rd, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Good luck on the other situation.
Yes, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Item number three. Discussion of Possible Approval of a Contract for Purchases between the City of Bisbee and Melcher Brothers Inc. for mine car wheels and axle sets in the amount of $65,610. Some of us are probably going, haven't we discussed this before? And we sort of did, but the price changed in that period of time on the very day we discussed it. So we are now back to hopefully approve so our train can have wheels.
That's correct.
Does anybody have any questions of Mr. Graham in reference to why we need the wheels and so forth?
Just that, wondering what the lifespan is on them.
The wheels that we're currently replacing are, look like about 1920s?
No, I mean, but how long will the new ones last? Approximately?
I guess about 30 years.
Oh.
It all depends, you know, on the quality of steel. That doesn't vary greatly.
Some of us won't be here to hold on to replacing these.
The price changes for the year, it's true.
The terms change, not the price.
The price didn't change, Mr. Mayor. The terms. Oh, I apologize. Because that would alter the bidding process. But just the payment terms are the same price change. Thank you. I appreciate that clarification. I misspoke. I apologize. Okay.
I move to approve the contract for purchase of mine car wheels and axle sets from Melcher Brothers Inc. in the amount of $65,610.
Second?
We have a motion. We have a second. Ms. Cornata?
Councilmember Pollak?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacomino?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number four. Discussion of Possible Approval to Allow the Queen Line Tour Manager to Purchase a New Marcha Locomotive. Mr. Graham, plead your case.
Yeah. Well, in the search for mine car wheels, I mentioned before I talked to some Canadian mining dealers. And they sent me an email saying that they had a used Banshee motor, probably about 1950s, probably about 1955, for the price of $5,500. And these are very just scarce to come across. And I looked at it, and the parts alone are worth that. I've got photographs, but it's fairly complete. It probably doesn't run. But I'm looking at it for the wheels and the small parts that are inside of it, like the control parts.
And it is in your budget, sir?
It is in the budget.
Yes, sir. Any questions, Mr. Graham?
Not a question, just a comment. I was gonna say, that sounds like a really good bargain.
I was blown away. Yeah. Because the last one that the city purchased was over $40,000.
Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the purchase of a used locomotive from Nelson Machinery and Equipment, LTD, for the total amount of $7,409.
Second? We have a motion. We have a second. Those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Graham.
Thank you.
Item number five. Discussion of Possible Direction to Staff on a Petition received from Peter Young, asking the City Council to cancel all plans or proposals to make OK Street a one-way street. We certainly discussed this at length the last time, last meeting. And it was at that point that he formally gave us the petition containing 37 names of those people that we had discussed were directly impacted, living either on OK or on... Youngblood. Thank you.
I'm going to be lying.
My best recollection was that we had one person saying, please don't do that. We had a couple of people that said, I'd rather you didn't, but it's not that big of a deal. Does anybody have any different recollection than that?
No, that's the way I remember it also. And Peter Young is satisfied. And I think most people at the moment, at least, are satisfied with the way it is.
I am only hesitant by one thing in here. And I don't want to bind us to something that says we can't ever do something. And I'm looking at this and, you know, looking at this and it says cancel all plans or proposals to make OK a one-way street. And I'm fine with that at this point, but we don't know what can happen next year or some other time for that to come before us. It does, this doesn't require... This isn't really, doesn't require a vote. It's just direction to staff that at this particular point, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Council, I believe that we are satisfied with the position of keeping OK presently a two-way street. But that doesn't mean that it can't be revisited in the future. Is that...
That's my...
All right. So that would be our direction to staff. Okay. Item number six. Public Auction of City Surplus Property Located at 8 Old Douglas Road and the Establishment of a Minimum Bid Price. Mr. Ward, welcome, Mr. Ward. We haven't seen you in a couple of meetings.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. This property over on 8 Douglas Road, it's been declining for many years. It's on their vacant abandoned, dilapidated properties list. It's in, the building that's on it is neither a liability, I would say it's a liability, but it kind of pampers itself out. But it kind of pamples itself out, so it's neither an asset nor a liability, in my opinion. But the property is going to be, has been declining for so long. Lucci Giacominho's been on the city for years to do something about that. We don't seem inclined to fix it up. So I think selling it would be a good idea for the city and put on the tax roll and it would improve the building, I'm certain, and the property.
Great.
It has planning and zoning with recommendation.
All right, and for everybody's, how large is the property?
About a fifth of an acre.
Okay, and the minimum price?
$30,000.
Okay, so that would be, okay. All right, any questions?
What do you base the price on?
He bases the price on... Yeah.
The county, actually, when they were doing the planning and zoning, they were considerably less than that. I pushed it up a little bit, but by their, or by half of what they wanted. But my point is that you start at a price that you can get bids on. It's a public option. Anybody can bid. If it's too low priced, it comes up. If it's too high, nobody will bid on it.
Right.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Ward. Do we have anybody that wants to... Wants to make any type of a motion there?
Is it necessary to have a motion to...
Whether we want to sell it or not?
Okay, well.
Yes, sir. And then we will be holding a public auction. Yes, sir. But it is necessary, same with wanting to sell.
Can I ask one more quick question?
Nay.
Can I ask one more quick question?
Yes.
Okay, so let's say we vote to pass the sell and nobody bids that.
Okay.
What happens?
Then we come back and decide that we want to go for a lower price.
Okay. Thanks.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I would, please, you will ultimately approve the actual purchase price based on following the auction. There'll be a second stage for the council to consider the auction bid price that came in.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Do we... Did you, you finished your...
Yeah, I've finished my call. I was, I'm not quite sure how this motion should go, but I'll give it a shot. I move that we accept the bid from, that we accept the bid.
May I?
Well, I don't know how to put it.
Okay, I'll be happy to.
Yeah.
I'll be happy to.
They'll be out there, all right.
Well, we'll see. I move that we... Attempt to sell this property at public auction with a fair, a minimum bid price of $30,000.
Second.
So we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Item number eight. Discussion of possible approval of purchase. Oh, another... Dyslexic today. Well, item number seven. Public auction of city surplus property located adjacent to parcel 101-12-082A and the establishment of a minimum bid price. Mr. Ward.
This is a new city amusement, going up, going up a hill. It's pretty rough country, steep and, it's not super steep, I mean, opposed to some places we had in Old Bisbee. But it's never gonna be, it's never gonna be developed into a road.
Where is its location for peoples?
It's between Van Dyke and Black Knob. It's 150 foot long and a 30 foot wide. I think that makes it about a tenth of an acre.
Okay. And the recommended minimum price?
$2 per square foot is long, 4,500 square feet, which makes it $9,000.
$9,000, okay. Any questions, Mr. Ward?
Yeah, I do. So it's how, how wide is this?
30, if I remember correctly.
So it's 30 feet wide and by a minimum piece of?
Yeah.
Something that can't even be built on and we're winning $9,000 for it. And...
I don't know what the county had asked prior to this because it went before planning and zoning once, but there were some mistakes. And so it went under the county and then it went by my direction. And I kept the price that was on it. $2 per square foot isn't too bad of a price. It's a lot of dirt, though. And that's what makes the price higher. You guys can accept the lower bid if you're so inclined.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? I move that we have a public auction of city surplus property located adjacent to parcel 101-12-082A with the minimum bid price of $2 per square foot.
Second.
All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion carries five to one. Item number eight. Discussion of possible approval of purchase 125 universal carts for in rollout trash cans from Toter. Mr. Harrow, Public Works Director, welcome, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As you said, I'm asking for approval to purchase the 125 universal carts. That's what they're called, right? You know, the rollout trash cans. With those, we did solicit for proposals. We received five proposals. The low bid was by Toter for $6,837.09. The high bid was over $13,000. With these, you know, trash cans, we plan on putting them in the Saginaw and Bakerville area, which will allow us to remove the old dumpsters that we have there. We will also, in doing that, it'll lessen the amount of illegal dumping we get. We get a lot of construction trash, furniture, mattresses, those types of things. And they ruin our trash trucks, so that's our, our goal with this.
Yeah, they'll be consolidated to the dumpsters in front of my house. Any questions, Mr. Harrow? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the purchase of 125 universal carts, rollout trash cans from Toter.
Second.
All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried unanimously. Item number 11. Discussion of possible approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Bisbee and the County of Cochise for planning and zoning subdivision development.
I think we skipped nine.
Nine.
Well, no, I skipped 10. Okay, I did. At least I'm batting 1,000 today. I really... Put my... Discussion of possible appointment of Teresa Coleman, Jesus Harrow, and Al Anderson to an architectural and engineering selection team for the City Hall Building. Mr. Pollak has asked not to be on that team. This is an ad hoc committee. And so it goes through the same appointment process. And Mr. Anderson has turned in an application for committee work on this committee. Do we have any questions?
Are there any other people that turned in?
No.
Interesting. I have a question.
This way.
Now, Mr. Anderson isn't going to be bidding on...
That's correct.
Okay.
I'd like to state the reason for my refusal to serve on this committee.
All right.
I believe I would have a conflict of interest and having to vote on the city council and be on the committee would create a problem for me, so I chose not to.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the appointment of Teresa Coleman, Jesus Harrow, and Al Anderson to an architectural and engineering selection team for the City Hall Building.
Thank you. I'll second that. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Now it's item number 11. Discussion of possible approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Bisbee and the County of Cochise for planning and zoning subdivision development and other long-range planning services. Ms. Coleman, City Manager.
This will replace the existing IGA that we have with Cochise County. The council did approve purchasing a permit, permit software through iWorks. Hopefully, training will wrap up. We'll get the information together by the first of the year. We'll be doing our own permitting. And then we'll no longer need the permitting or planning commission services from Cochise County.
And this will also save us money.
Yes, it will also save things to purchase the iWorks software.
Questions, council?
Hey, I have a question. My understanding when I first came on council was this agreement also included Joe Ward's position, that he was, we paid him, but he was an employee of the county.
Yeah, that changed through council action quite a lot, but...
Exactly when?
Well, exactly. I can tell you that. It did change quite a lot, but I believe it was before he was on the council.
I was just curious, because I was curious what was gonna happen to him. That was a question.
No, Mr. Ward is our, is the city employee.
Yeah, that's... Yeah, would you please? I would appreciate it if you would. Thanks.
Yeah, I do believe that that had been discussed but never formulated through an IGA. But if it had been discussed and it was brought back to us, that was not going to happen. I know that. So...
Okay, just, another question, but a comment.
Please, sir.
I just want to thank Ms. Coleman for doing this and looking at it because that was quite a lot of the deal that we had to enforce on her. Thank you so much.
Do we... Have any motion?
I move to approve the intergovernmental agreement, IGA with the City of Bisbee and Cochise County for planning, zoning, and subdivision development and other long-range planning services.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Cornetta.
Councilmember Pollak.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacominho.
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Smith.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Item number 12. Discussion of possible approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Bisbee and the County of Cochise for plan review and building inspection services. Ms. Coleman.
This would continue the cooperative agreement that we have for building inspection services. So they will cover us when we need it and we can cover for them when they have to have your authority.
Same thing we've been doing, just, just reopening.
Yep.
Any questions? Here we go. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the intergovernmental agreement for the City of Bisbee and Cochise County for plan review and building inspection services.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Cornetta.
Councilmember Pollak.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacominho.
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Smith.
Aye. Motion passes five to one. Item number 13. City Managers Report.
Okay, hang on, guys. Well, I'm saying. I'm teasing you. Day after Christmas, so there is the Thursday after Christmas, Wednesday followed by Friday when City Hall is closed. I will be closing City Hall on the Thursday after Christmas. And staff will have the option to work or take PTO for that day. And we will cover Wednesday, Christmas Eve for the full day. So there will be staff coverage Monday. In talking with folks around town, I did unearth some development standards for the Bisbee Historic District that were paid for. $17,000 was paid for those standards, but not presented for approval by the planning commission or the city council. In the meantime, about nine years have elapsed. I have provided some comments. Joe Ward has provided comments. I will seek comments on that, on those development standards from the design review board at their meeting tomorrow. And under our IGA with the county utilicensors of Chriskey and McLaughlin to help us reformat this work into a document that will serve us at this time. And then take that to planning commission for a recommendation. Let's see. The proposed fee schedule has been posted on the website 60 days in advance of your first meeting in January. So we will be working hard to prepare both an updated fee schedule and updating your ordinances to reflect the fact that those fees have been now compiled into one place. So that'll be quite a bit of work in the next 60 days, thanks to Ashley for really putting the pedal to the metal. And getting, and getting it done. An update on the solar lights on Arizona Street. We weren't able to identify that each one needs four new batteries. And Conflint Electric did find us new controllers that would work for the next five to seven years for us. And the cost will be $700 per street light to get them all up and running again. So we'll move forward with that. And your dark skies ordinance will be on the agenda at your next meeting.
Take command.
You're welcome.
Mr. Higgins.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a couple seconds. So with that, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We stand adjourned.